I was like. Took me half a day just to dictate the minutes. Actually, longer than that. Cause the meeting was so long, so.
For you. You don't have AI.
You know, I've thought about using that, Tim, but I'm really worried that it wouldn't be.
You still have.
It wouldn't be correct, right?
You still have to go through and proof it, but.
Yeah.
It's incredible and. The one software that you have makes a difference because we're in the testing phase.
Mm hmm.
It's incredible with. We had an hour and a half meeting. And within a minute. The full itinerary.
Yeah.
Had a three page summary.
Yep.
It was incredible.
I've had it on some short meetings do that and it's really amazing. It's nice for the notes, but the way. I do these, I just don't know if it would be accurate. I'd have to use those notes and still. Reform at it.
Yeah, the thing that we're trying to check out too is because you know, in this case you have an agenda.
Mm hmm.
And so trying to get those two to come together, we're still figuring that part out.
Yeah, yeah.
Six o'clock, call the meeting to order. Uh, I will dispense with the pledge of allegiance unless there is. An objection to that. Uh. Christina, you have tonight's role.
Yep.
And can move on to approving the agenda for this evening.
All approved this evening's agenda.
Motion.
On second plan.
And a second. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Right.
I, I opposed, hearing none, motion carries. All business, city engineer update. Tim.
Have a few things tonight, uh, let service line. That is due October twenty seventh, uh, we've reduced the number of unknowns on the customer side from thirty one down to six. So it's been very helpful. Uh, out of the six unknowns, one is vacant or abandoned, so that one won't count. Uh, one needs another visit. I don't know if that'll get done or not. One was going to send us photos. Uh, one of us didn't want us in their. Place and we couldn't get. Two individuals, two homes, so. Uh, pretty good. We're at a good spot. We're ready to submit. I think, you know, this city's in a really good spot. So that'll, that'll be done. Um. Want to talk about lift station stuff? That'll probably be more appropriate. When we're down later on the.
Okay.
And then Duncan is with us. He's with our environmental department. He's going to give you an update on that. Well, head protection plan because there is some action that we'll need at the next council meeting.
Sure.
Um, so yeah, the well, that protection plan that we submitted back in the minute, uh, Minnesota Department of Health. They approved that on September twenty fourth. Um, so now we have the ability to now formally adopt it into as part of the city's water protection plan. Um, so what we'll have to do is at the next city council meeting, we'll update some of the cover pages, say that. It's on this date that the well have protection plan will be taking effect. It's MDH approved on this date. And then once you approve it, we would then start the implementation process and notifying the LGUs, the local government units. Um, MDH has provided me and Mike with a. Template to send out for that. So if we can just get that on some letterhead. Be able to assist you with that. Um, then we'll get that sent out to the LGUs. That has to be done within sixty days of. Um, the approval, so. We get that done right after the you guys approve and fully adopt the plan. So we'd be well within that sixty days on.
All townships or just the?
Uh, it would just be the one affected ones. Yeah, the affected ones and we have a person on there that I'm blanking out their names. Off the top of my head, but. He came to a couple of our meetings, uh, the first one when we came in, but. We'll send him and we could send these as an email.
Bill Reid.
Acceptable.
Was it Bill Reid from Heinz?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I believe that was the only township member that we had within your guys' wallet protection area. Um, otherwise it'll just be the DNR, um, MBH. And. Um. The county well or um, soil water district.
Soil and water district, that's what I thought.
Um, so once we get it sent out to them and that's just a letter just saying. We've formally adopted the well protection plan and we're going to start implementing. The items that we had in that plan. And then that's where we'll meet up with MDH, um, the city would meet up with them. We can certainly be there. We need some assistance, but it's basically just coming up. What you guys are going to do for the next ten years to complete your plan. And for that, there is funding that is available for it. Um, there's the plan implementation grant where that one is. Um, this year you'll get up to fifteen thousand and the window for it is open now.
Okay.
And we can start applying for that as soon as possible. They're starting a new online one with this. This is the first year, so you'd have to get that, um. Account set up with MDH, which. From what they have some good YouTube videos on that, uh, and it's on their website. Um, we can forward you guys a link if you haven't gotten that yet too.
Okay.
Um, and that one's up to fifteen thousand dollars to implement these plans. Um, the other one is a competitive one where it is. You have to match the funds and there's a little bit less funded funds available for that one. It's a little bit harder, but. If you're not picked for either one of those, you do get put on a backlist to then go into the spring one too.
Okay.
And it's a spring and fall application that you can apply for that. So when funding is available. I believe this spring they didn't have any of the plan implementation one, but. I think that's why they came out with fifteen thousand this year. Usually it's about ten thousand other years, so. Um, but that's sort of the next steps and then you'll just start working through that while our protection plan over the next ten years and. Knocking it out.
Cool.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, and I would anticipate we would be involved in the next implementation meeting, right? Cause that's where they'll lay out and discuss the timing and scheduling and things that. Are going to happen over the next ten years. And then I think we would work with Mike and Christina on, you know, what do you want for our involvement going forward?
Okay.
Yep. No, I don't have any.
Do you guys want to jump to the lift stations then?
Mike, did you have anything for? Uh, we can, uh. We'll shuffle things around a little bit because we'll keep you going right onto the lift stations.
Yep. So we've been doing some checking into that. Um, and you know, Mike has alluded to the fact that. Three of them are in. Pretty rough shape, you know, they're still functioning, but we just don't know the timing of that. So we started to. Strategize on, you know, what's the best way to handle that, uh, knowing that we do have the water. Portion of the project on the intended use plan, but the wastewater we don't yet because we have to finalize a facility plan. And that'll be due in March. But you know, if we're successful. We would be likely to get funding for twenty seven. So that's probably not going to fit the need that we have for the lift stations that Mike is having it written. We don't know. Uh, so we have worked with. Um, funding agencies in the past. To try to expedite some things, you know, because I would consider this kind of emergency thing that if these lift stations go out. That's problematic, right?
Mm hmm.
So we've just been trying to think about what is the best way to do it? You know, we could apply for a small cities grant. But there again, with the timing of that, you're going to be lucky to get money in twenty seven.
Mm hmm.
So it just doesn't seem realistic. Uh, I think Christine is already ahead of the game and already has the MIDI loan information in the packet to go through rural water. And that would be something that we would suggest, um, that the city goes forward with. And so. We just need to talk about what is the city's appetite for budget and timing and stuff like that. Um. When we looked at the PER to do these lift stations in totality, you're probably around a million bucks.
Okay.
So that includes generators, uh, controls. Upgrading all the lift stations, you know, we wouldn't have to do the generators and the, well, we probably want to do the controls. You know, the thing that would, you need to keep in mind is with the rural water grant. We can write the specifications such that you could tailor to get the pumps you want and the controls you want. That's the only time. We were going to have that opportunity to get them. So if that's important to the city, this is the time to do it. And I think our cap is a million bucks on that MIDI loan.
Um. We're under, yeah, the MIDI loan we would be. We couldn't do micro because of our borrower population. We'd have to stay with Maddie, which is up to a million and up to fifteen years. And depending on how much the city borrows, the, um. The issuance fees will. Very.
Yeah, so.
But at a minimum there, we're going to spend ten thousand dollars, almost eleven thousand dollars on issuance.
Right, yeah, it's thirteen thousand, I think, based on the information here. So. So, you know, I think if you wanted to do the lift stations in totality and the controls, you're probably going to be in that eight hundred thousand dollar range. My guess.
If you did them all.
If you did them all.
Yeah. Let me cherry pick the ones that are have to get us through the most amount of time to get till borrowing.
Right, so you know, it just boils down to affordability and the city's appetite to extend funds at this point. Cause then what'll happen is when the full property goes forward, we're going to keep everything in there, but what will happen is this will be noted as debt. Against the city, so then that will play into the loan grant.
Yep.
Issue, right?
Right.
So we just need to know that if you don't want to do the all of the lift stations at this point in time. Then you're going to potentially have different controls and different pumps at lift stations throughout the city.
Which we already have.
Right.
Everything's different.
And, and less successive grant versus loan. At a later time. I mean, it is kind of a drop in the bucket compared to eight hundred grand, however.
Right.
It is pretty. Pretty meaningful to get those three running.
Yeah.
Better.
Yep.
So the quotes we have listed a total of two hundred thousand. Roughly.
Uh, I'm.
One ninety seven.
Yeah, like one ninety something.
So it's rounded to two hundred, so.
Yep.
So we're talking something more elaborate than just financing two hundred thousand at this point and getting it done?
Well, we have six lift stations. Seven. Six. Six lift stations. We're only looking at. Revamping three of them to the point because they are the ones that get used the hardest.
Mm hmm.
Which is almost a third of. That valuation that Tim's talking about.
But the caveat to that though is you would not be able to use quotes because of the hundred seventy five thousand, you'd have to bid this out.
Yep.
But again, you could tailor it such that you're.
Um. You're narrowing.
Specifying, yeah, you're, you're narrowing or specifying the materials that you would like.
Not cheapest pump available.
Yeah, it wouldn't have to be, because. You know, the, the reason you have to go that way is when you're getting federal dollars or other dollars, it has to be fair and free market.
Right.
And so you can't write specific specifications, but in, in this case, since it's going to be strictly loaned to the city, we have that ability.
Right. So what we don't have is another quote from another vendor at this point, but we do need some guidance as to if you guys are looking towards. Moving forward with this process because it's going to take some time to develop that bid. Um. Announcement.
Yeah, there wouldn't be another, well, what it would be is you'd have to, we'd have to be plans, specifications, and then we'd have to send it out for bids.
Right.
And open it up to bids.
Yep. And I'd have to, uh, finalize details with, um, Mike Buboni at. Merle Water.
Yeah, and, uh, who does the city use as a financial advisor?
Ellers.
Okay.
Todd Hagan.
Going through the rural water, we have to use David Brown, but obviously you would still want to visit with your.
We have.
Planner.
Yeah, and we have a bond council too, so, and that's Taft, so they'd all work together.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, that was my, my next question. The last two attachments are bond council services and. Standard Northland Trust Services. I. Think we would not. You use those two?
Well, these are, these are boilerplate. Documents that come from Minnesota Rural Water Run. When you're doing the alone application, they will partner with their. Um, with our bond counsel.
Right, so we would not use.
Not the one that they have.
We would not issue bonds separately other than through Ellers.
Correct.
With Todd. Obviously our strong advocate, they do all our other bonds, so I don't know why we wouldn't do that. So the big question is, do you want to? Take over loans for all three?
You're looking at three hundred thousand or you're looking at eight hundred thousand? Cause in their quotes, I don't think they had anything in there for startup and testing and.
No.
Other things like that, so you know, it's going to be more than two hundred thousand if you just do the three.
Yeah.
And I don't know that that had controls in it either. It had the panels, but I don't know that it had.
The panel was built with the controls and everything.
Okay.
Well, my philosophy is if we, if these are in need of work, we should do it sooner rather than later. Cause once, what happens if it fails? So we have, uh.
Didn't we have photos of these in the PER?
What's that?
What's that? Didn't we have photos of these lift stations and the PER?
Yep.
Yeah, well, they're, they're definitely at their end of life for the pumps and things like that, you know, there's no question that they need. They are replaced.
So should we do these three now via a loan and then? Not delay any further with adding, you know?
Well, I think that's what you're hearing from Mike is at a minimum, you need to do those three.
At a minimum, those three should be done.
Yeah.
The, the real question, what you alluded to was. Do we do them all on this? That way we can specify because like he said. Right now, doing this loan, we have the ability to specify and get them all the same. Right? The controls, pumps is close to the same, you know, as possible. Use the vendor who is here at one in the morning when I call. Essentially, right? That's the real question here to me is, are we doing three or are we doing six? I would like to note that the lift station at. The motel.
Yes.
Which, uh. Is not. A lift station, right? You know which one I'm talking about. We run it as a lift station. It's essentially a sun pump.
Well, more of a dranger kind of thing.
It's, yeah, it, it's. It's something special over there. And I believe if you look at that PER, you can see the pictures where it's held together with ratchet straps.
Yes, that's what I was alluding to.
So my two cents is I would really like to see what those schedules look like. Um, depending upon the main difference between doing three or doing six because. Your principal and interest payments for eight hundred is going to be huge. And this would be because it's sewer, because it's wastewater, you have the ability to. Um, levy for part of that debt and use revenue for part of that debt, but only sewer, you can't do water. So that gives you a little bit more freedom. To not drain your wastewater operating budget to death. Um, but if you're going the full route. Expect to levy for some of it. Cause there's no way wastewater can handle it all.
Yeah, cause this is only a fifteen year term too.
Correct.
If you go RD, that's forty and PF is thirty, so.
So all of those, all of those increments you have to consider.
Big chunk of money.
Just doing eight hundred thousand sounds like a great idea, but if you're only doing it for fifteen years, what is that a payment?
Payments will be huge.
And you won't be able to float it and you won't be able to levy for it.
Just keep in mind what happens when they go down.
Well, somebody's got to pay the bill. Somebody's got to pay the bill.
There's both sides. Let's see both. Both where we say. Which way you're going to go, but.
Will that give you time to do your homework done? Cause do you know, do you know what the timing is on that loan?
On an issuance from Minnesota Rural Water, they can pretty much come back with it within sixty days.
And you can.
I've done it before, for smaller, for smaller loans.
Something we're trying to vote on at the next meeting?
No, you won't be ready for that.
So I mean.
Cause you'll have time to get with the others and talk about that.
Right, and they'd need to know exactly what they're, what they're bonding for.
What kind of payments? Those would be.
I mean, I'm sure Todd can whip together. A very simple schedule between two hundred thousand, let's round it to two fifty to include the issuance and any other. Um, admin time. Versus eight hundred.
Right.
But I think we can all figure that out in our heads, how much more it's going to be over the course of fifteen years. We've all gotten loans on vehicles and houses before.
So what's the percentage that you would? Kind of look for it to levy? On, or how much, you know?
The last time we split it, um, between a levy and wastewater. Um, I want to say that was for the Fourth Street Northeast. Program or a wastewater line that got fixed and a new lift station put in. And, um, a good portion of that was paid for with assessments. Um, so. There wasn't much levied for it. Maybe. Three, three to six grand a year. Not a lot. The project itself done maybe cost about a hundred and seventy five and the city staff did most of the actual work on it.
But if you were going to say two hundred and fifty thousand. If you were going to. You know. Between wastewater and, and levy, so what, what would be the percentage?
Probably sixty forty. Maybe seventy thirty if you didn't want to break the wastewater budget.
And I think in this case you better go three and eight because that doesn't have engineering in there either.
Right.
So I would use two and eight. Those would be good numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, we. I might try to levy for an extra thing.
Yeah.
Would be all nice to have all interchangeable parts and the same thing, but.
Yeah, when it comes to sewer, I mean, I'm. I worked in private business for years or public companies, but inaction is what bites you, so. I would say we got three quotes, we. We've assessed three lift stations. Let's not. Do too much delaying, I'm talking about it. Researching, so. We want to be, you know, doing seven things and. Now it's twenty six and twenty twenty seven.
Yeah, those are the three that have, you know. We're, we're all agreed, we're going to be those.
Getting done.
Yeah, those three, but.
If anyone's had stuff coming up, their floor drains in the basement, magnify that by the city. Stuff coming up, some manholes, you know, a lot.
It's not just your stuff.
Makes me clarify that name. So having a. A vintage sewer system myself, I know what it is for one house having a problem. So is that? Yeah, that's basically what you're looking for tonight, Christina.
Well, just some guidance, yeah. I mean, I'm gonna need, I'm gonna need WITSS help to, you know, make sure that. That bid announcement is accurate.
Right.
If we really want to tailor it the way, um, Mike's intending to. Which is great, we just want to make sure that. The language is right.
Anything else?
Um, on a timing standpoint for this. I, is this a, is this a winter project?
Well, you could do it in winter, but. It wouldn't be ideal.
It wouldn't.
I would say. Get the financing stuff figured out here. Get the plans done and bid it in February for spring.
For like.
If you're all right with that.
April.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not the easiest to. Try to do lift stations when it's cold though.
Yeah, it could be done, but yeah.
More water inside, it's just to be.
That's kind of what I was thinking too. Um, Tim will partner with you. And that's. And we'll talk to Todd and. Um. Roll water a little bit more. Cool.
Library?
Um, so the project is moving along, um, polar. Finished the entryway floor and the restroom. Floor. Ready before last. Um, we ran into an issue last week and I think it's finally resolved, got resolved Saturday and today. When we turned all the electrical panels back on for the baseboard and the floor heat, nothing worked. So they, I did confirm with the contractor today that Bustlers did get back in there, um, Friday, Saturday. And, um, it is now indeed working is what I was told today. Um, so that's good. I was a little worried about that. I think something happened in the off peak when they shut the panel down to move all the electrical. Because they relocated the thermostat for the floor heat. But when we turned all the panels back on, nothing was communicating from the thermostats to the units themselves, so nothing was turning on. So that's good, just in time. The staff over there has been great, so that's. That's ready to go now. Um, the cabinets for the reception area is, are in, so we're just working on timing, uh, painting and flooring now. And we're waiting for counters to still come back in. I have a meeting with Kelly on Wednesday afternoon this week to start working on. Um, the types of, um, racking, uh. Tables and, um, workstations that they need for their tech area to find the best. Product at the best price, um, I can now start utilizing the grant money from the Board of Education for that multipurpose room. So I want to make sure I get that stuff ordered, um. Soon as possible, but I don't want to bring everything in and then have. Too much in the space and not let Tony and his staff keep working. So everything's just kind of a timing bug.
True.
But the, the heating thing was kind of a snafu, didn't expect.
Small one.
Little bit.
Uh, anything on the ducks? Progress?
One for me.
Yeah. City Hall?
I don't have anything new, except I did confirm with deed that if the city were to buy back that piece of property. From the demolition project, it would not be, um. A conflict. Um. The only thing like I speculated was that the city's, the forgiveness wouldn't be there, so the full cost of the deed, um. Loan would be one hundred percent on the city. So. Put that in your consideration for whatever anybody hopes to want to do for this building.
Okay, we've already covered the lift stations, then you're on to the. Fund, general fund budget.
Um, so I did, I did speak with, um. League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, their board did meet last week. Um, and the person I spoke to was pretty confident that the numbers that were estimated in the guidance for. This, next year's budget were accurate. She is actually not expecting any increase. So what I did for you, just to see, um, how it would affect the city total and the general fund is. I would backtrack a little bit. Your workers' comp compensation, um, premium is based on many facets. How many, um, workers' comp claims you have, what your deductible is. And how much payroll you pay in as a city and there's a couple more. And it's generated year after year and then follow up our. Our liability is paid from June one to June one. So when I ask for the quote, I'm giving it to them for a full calendar year, so. Right now, what we're paying off of is what we estimated in our budget for wages for twenty five. What they do for our twenty six isn't. I'd give them all the wages for twenty six. So what I did for you was just a quick calculation, so you could see the percentage differences between just wages. This is full overtime, full time overtime and part time wages, okay? Citywide. Citywide, just department by department, so you can see what kind of an increase overall for the city is. And broken down by the major funds that support the municipal workers' compensation. And then on the below sheet that I gave you on the same part is, I showed you what we're estimating. In budget lines with a ten percent increase for worker, workers' comp. And if we did zero, and then it's difference. Because everybody wants to lower the levy as much as possible, so you can see in the yellow. My estimation on that calculation is that the general fund, this would drop the general fund to twenty, about twenty-six, twenty-six hundred dollars. From what we already preliminarily adopted, if we so choose to adjust the budget. As I wrote here, um, and then subsequently each, the water sewer liquor and golf fund would be adjusted the same direction too. So um, something to consider for your final approval in December, I just need guidance as to how you would like to proceed.
Is there a big enough savings? Father? Or to leave it in place as a? Or efficient? Well, I don't, I think we want to avoid any surprises to. Having to go in negatives with that.
Keep in mind that based upon what wages end up being after the audit is done. There's a potential dividend or rebate that the League of Minnesota Cities also provides back to. Its participants at the end, if our wages weren't as high as what they were ultimately estimated at, but at that point, that audit is done. After, on the actual premium year, so half of one year and a portion of the next. And that's how that's given back, so it's really hard for us to say it's gonna lower just the twenty-six budget. Or just the twenty-five budget when it's half, half and half, it's actually seven and five months. So as you roll it forward. That's what you gotta consider is, are we really, are we really, are we splitting hairs here, are we really helping the levy much? I know when you throw a ten percent increase. At somebody, that sounds like a lot, but when you're talking with a small number, it really isn't, it's, you know, it's ten percent of what? Okay, well, I just need to know, so when I do the truth and taxation, I have an actual number for you guys, so some guidance would be great.
I guess I'd say leave it, I'd admire, leave the my opinion. Yeah, I mean, if we have money left over, it's not like we're gonna blow it, just gonna.
Well, and the other variables you play into is, we don't know what like gas is gonna cost the streets budget, even though we put in a dollar amount for motor fuels. As well as like fire, propane could go through the roof in January, which could blow our propane budget. Out of the well too, so there's things that change a lot more frequently than estimating something of this nature. I would recommend you guys keep it. For, for just that small amount, but it's really affecting your lobby.
And we lost the new business.
Matthew is here to introduce himself or reintroduce himself, maybe.
I was gonna say, I went to school in Black Text, some people know me, but I'm the new economic community coordinator for the BDC board, so you'll be seeing me around and I. Hope to be of service and help you guys out. So, nice to meet you.
Did you go to school and blacked up for many years or?
For many years?
Your entire career, your entire school career or?
Uh, elementary through high school, yeah.
Okay, like kindergarten through fourth grade?
Yeah, oh, yeah, me, my whole family.
You're a thirteen-year veteran of public schools.
I survived.
Just like me. And Max, yes.
Yeah.
It's good to see you again.
Good to see you too.
Yeah, so Matthew's been formally approved by the Development Corps this month and. Starting off pretty hot and heavy, you've got a couple of things that you're looking into and.
Yeah.
He's got a good background working on grant writing. So.
Once those portals open back up, we can get started.
Yeah, that's true, the feds need to get back to work.
I know, kind of put a wrench in the plan.
Yeah, but there's other things that, you know, your first thirty days, sixty days do, it's got a lot of, got a lot of meet and greets together. You guys know what Scott did when he first started, so. Put a face with the name at this point, so you might see him at a few other board meetings, you guys.
Hoping to get some actual projects moving forward though, I do know a lot of people in town, so. I feel like the networking won't take too long, so yeah, trying to get some projects moving forward for you guys.
Like to see you come to the HRDC meetings.
Okay.
I can.
Um, I just contacted Tony when we, when I first started, so I will do that.
Good, we need more development in Black Duck, so while you're on board.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else for the, for the new guy?
Um, if anybody wants to get in touch with Matthew, I have his contact information too.
Perfect.
I think you're still working on business cards. Um, maybe.
I didn't hear any word about the business cards.
I think that's a misty thing.
Okay.
We'll, we'll move forward.
Yeah.
We'll get somewhere.
Okay, then we'll move on to the disaster relief.
Uh, I updated the. Agenda and took that off, Max.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. Oh, that's fine, it's the only thing that's been adjusted, that disaster relief. I heard from um, Lane and he could not make it tonight, so he is going to be readjusted to the November tenth agenda.
Yeah.
So. Sorry about that. Everything else was the same, that was the only change.
So our meeting schedule then?
Uh, yes, so I've drafted your meeting schedule for twenty-six. Um.
Tuesday?
There is one Tuesday, uh, that is due in part of how Labor Day lands in September twenty-six, um. The reason I pushed a Tuesday on there. One, we have the ability to do so, and two, if we waited a whole nother week, we'd probably be into like the fourteenth of the month, which is way too late for us to do bills. And to do any other business, so um, that'll be the day after Labor Day, I think, in that month.
First day of school.
Yeah. Um, otherwise, there's only two other days that are kind of late, May is gonna be in eleven, the eleventh, August would be the tenth. Fourth of July isn't going to be a problem again, because the fourth actual holiday is on the Saturday. So city offices are only closed on the third, so that holiday isn't really a big issue for us. I did. I did think hard about the January meeting though. Because the fifth is the first Monday and the first is Thursday. And that could be tight, but um, Paige and I are pretty confident that we'll be able to get that. In.
Okay.
So unless anybody wants to see something change, I'll put this in front of you guys for approval in November.
Six o'clock still works for everybody?
Well, that's in the ordinance, so you're gonna have to change that if you want me to change the time, you don't get choice on that one.
So I have a question. May, if, if the ordinance says we have it on the first Monday following the third, why don't we, why is that one not on May fourth?
For the simple fact of the same argument I just brought up with January, when the first lands on a Friday or a Saturday. It is really hard for us to get all of the bills in and everything completed by the time you guys have your, your, your meeting. So we have that. Luxury, if you will, in the language, to push it to the next one.
We do, okay. So this resolution would like, since we're, we're gonna pass this, that would like override the ordinance, so to speak, or?
No.
Okay.
No. No.
No.
Your ordinance gives you flexibility though.
A little bit. Honestly, I mean. To Ron's point, he is spot on, it should be the fourth, it is going to be impossible for us to get everything done by the fourth.
Well, that's the answer, I just.
Yeah.
Getting that up for me, so that's.
Yeah, understood. Yep. But that is a very good point, and I will double, double check before I can put it in front of you guys. If I'm not steering you wrong or not.
Well, thank you for clarifying, I was wondering why some of them were the second Monday instead of the first.
The language in the ordinance says first Monday after the third.
Well, you can change it.
Change it to the fifth.
But, but there's also additional language in there that states that um, if the Monday ends up being a holiday, you may do it on a Tuesday instead of the following Monday. So there is a little bit of flexibility on there.
Yeah, strictly Labor Day.
Yeah.
All right, looks good to me. Monday, doesn't matter if it's the first Monday or the fourth Monday, there's always Mondays. All right. Police Department.
Um, Mr. Amston, um, has put in notice. He will be going to uh, the Sheriff's, Sheriff's Department, probably mid-November if not sooner. Um, so therein lies a conversation that the city needs to discuss. Luckily, our levy does not include a second full-time officer of which we have not been able to find or recruit or hire in the last three years, so we've saved some money there. However, um. In the twelve years I've been here, we've gone through almost seven officers and. They have either gone to the county or they've retired. And I'm getting increasingly concerned that this police department in this town is not going to be able to stabilize. And I know we have this conversation every time this happens. But. The truth of the matter is, is that law enforcement is getting harder and harder to get people in. And. We've always been a stepping stone and the small little department for people to get their feet wet and then move on to bigger and better, which is not a problem. But. Therein lies our problem.
Well, that could be your opportunity.
Both. So I don't want anybody to like throw down and say we're disbanding the police department at this point, I have a couple of brainstorms in my head. But we need to have a serious come-to-Jesus moment about this. Because we've had a job announcement out for two years and I haven't been able to find a second person to work with Travis. Not viable anyway. We're very blessed to have him, um, it's my understanding he wants to be like the North End Deputy, so that'll be great, he'll at least be up here, but. I, I don't know how much longer we can keep doing this. With the pulse of what the career is. I plan to meet with um, the Sheriff's Department. In the next couple of weeks, just to get a idea of where they're at, because as soon as that jail is ready to go, they're gonna be hiring more people. Which is gonna make it also harder for us to recruit.
They got a couple more retirements coming up.
And they have at least two that I know of that are going within the next half, less than a year. But if the city wants to continue. Having a department. We'll move forward and try to get vacancies filled.
And you said we have a, a standing requisition out there for another officer, so we're not doing any specific advertising.
So in.
On his resignation.
Correct, in twenty-three and twenty-four's, I'm sorry, twenty-four and twenty-five's budget, the city levied for a second full-time officer. In addition to paying for our current officer. We are not able to fulfill that second officer's position, Personnel Committee has been involved in it and everything.
Solicited, posted, whatever.
Yep, if you go to the Minnesota Post Board's website right now and look at their job opportunities, it's probably. You know, there's, the, every city in the state's looking for officers, Foston brought their police department back. Two years ago now, maybe three. And they still have vacancies, they haven't been able to recruit, and Foston's. Made some really great advancements in their city and done some really nice changes with their emergency management. But they haven't been able to hire either. The last five years have just been, have just destroyed law enforcement.
The uh. When Travis was, well, while Travis is here, the, the number of calls that he assisted on was tremendous. I mean, I say, you know, that, to me, that's worth having.
Problem is, we can't find anyone.
I know.
I've sat in with Christina on those interviews and. Quite honestly, I'm more qualified than the people we're interviewing. We gotta have a serious, real conversation about what's going on.
I mean, there's, there's departments out there that are doing.
That's not a conversation about disbanding the department, then what, what is it?
Here's, here's the thing, you compare, if you go out there and you start looking at what other small cities, police departments are doing to recruit. My hometown is giving a canoe away. Mind you, ten thousand dollars, uh, Bemidji is paying for their um, their skills. That's seven grand worth of funding. They have, they'll pay for it upfront, they have to have a three years or X amount of years with the department to do it. I've heard of two people that have taken advantage of it and then left the department, and not because it's the department, because they don't want to be in law enforcement.
Okay.
I'm just fearful that we're not, we're gonna have, and, and we're gonna have a vacancy for a lot longer than a year. How long did it take us to find, get Travis? After Zach was gone?
Oh, a year, wasn't it? Yeah.
That's all right.
No. I thought there was like two or three other people you were.
I didn't think it was that long between the two of them, but we got really, really lucky with Travis.
Oh, I know.
That he was looking to get.
Back in.
Law for, law enforcement at the same time that we were looking to hire some.
Yeah.
And quite honestly, I mean, I think we all saw, should have saw the writing on the wall with Travis, unfortunately. Can't disparage the guy for mentoring himself.
No.
Would have done the same thing, probably.
No.
I mean, we do have a. The deputies that are around here are really, really like Joe and, you know, I mean. He's really been around a lot more than normal. Um, and he's really good with the. Every time I see him, he's really good with the people, so.
We are lucky to get a couple of um, sheriff's deputies to work part-time for us too, so we still have them. But it's, it's not full-time. I think AJ's on like once a shift of payroll and that's it. I think AJ's on like once a shift of payroll and that's it. So you got ten hours there.
Beltrami County willing to contract?
That's a conversation I'd like to have. Um, quite frankly, if it came to that, I would support having some dialogue with um, Sheriff Riggs now before his term is gone. Because if that were to be the path the city takes, we have a lot to offer now. First and foremost, we just bought a brand new squad that is identical to what the Sheriff's Department just did because we had Josh's input. We have a facility that is top-notch that the department uses and quite frankly, a lot of other agencies use it. So I don't know. I think Kelyers gets money from like ConCon to help Tony for having North End Deputy staffed. So I don't know what that language and what that would um, look like done, but I think we are sitting pretty good to have that conversation, at least.
Yeah, I mean, I remember, you know, a few years back when we were doing interviews for officers, like I would call course and stuff, you know, um, it was tough. People that came and actually sat down for the interview, it was tough to, you know, you couldn't hire them or you didn't want to.
I know.
Well, we had somewhat of a conversation with Riggs, what's that been, two years, three years?
Well, it was before we hired Travis. Yeah, it was when Zach was leaving and um, oh shoot, who was sitting in Josh, Josh's spot before him?
There's been a much bigger county presence ever since he took over. That and both the time that we had our conversation and our new facility up here, they're using the facility a lot.
Yeah.
It's helped them out immensely, and I think that's a, a key point for us in any talks with them too, yes.
Well, I completely spitballing, we have another emergency management facility that needs help. And it's not just the police department. And that building could get added to if it needed to be a shared space between police and ambulance. And I'm not saying that that's where it would go, but this is just clouds turning.
A little bit of remodeling, but you don't, you're trying to pull it in there.
Yeah. But I'd like to just, you know, see where the Sheriff's Office is sitting at before your board jumps off that cliff. I mean, let's face it. The county made it very clear when they adopted their preliminary levy, that their levy is gonna continue to go up. And a big portion of that is the jail and the Sheriff's Office, and they're cutting other, they're cutting other functions of their budget because of it. So if this is a partnership that goes forward, that doesn't cost them anything, we're sitting kind of good. I don't know.
This conversation needs to be.
It's a conversation.
It needs to be had sooner than later.
So Josh is setting something up with Riggs. Um, I'll let you guys know if I get in to talk with him in the next couple of weeks. I'll just, we'll just throw ideas at the wall and see what sticks. Because obviously, I'm sure they have a five and a ten-year plan, especially with the jail coming up.
Said, does he involve, if he's gonna be, you know, working for the North End?
Yeah.
That'd be, he'd be around.
Well, his wife works for Kelyer School and the kids go to school, so it's like, you know, leaving but not leaving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, United Way.
Uh, Max, I just threw this in here because it came to every single department in the city, so I thought you guys would want to see it. I don't know if there's any top, talking points at all on it for you guys, but um, yeah.
I saw that around. I think they're just trying to get all their volunteers together for it.
Yeah. This is pretty much their donation drive time, isn't it? Yeah, October's pretty big for them. That's what I thought.
They open up that big warehouse and they get more.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on it or not? Entertain a motion to adjourn. I know it's odd. It's too early for that.
This was my packet. This was wonderful. Especially carry it with one hand.
We'll move to adjourn. All favor.
Hi.
Hi. We stand adjourned.